Come on, sign up. Okay, well, we will begin with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with me. Now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move on to Agenda Item Three, Additions and deletions. So, we do have an addition for the minute, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, special meeting. We have a corrected, a correction for the adjusted time. It says four. What's the?
Yes, Mayor, it was four nineteen. It was supposed to be like seven nineteen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, the September fifteenth meeting minutes need one time correction. I'll now entertain a motion for approval.
September fifteenth.
It was approved at last board meeting and unnoticed. So, we want to add that to the agenda for approval. Yeah, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, special meetings, a correction for the adjusted time. And so, that would be Consent Item F. I'll now entertain a motion, Alderman Placios.
Make your motion to approve adding the Consent Item draft minutes for September fifteen, twenty twenty-two.
Second, Alderman Cooper.
Um, I second your motion. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, Approval of the Consent Items. I entertain a motion for approval of the Consent Items. Alderman Cooper.
Yes, um, I wanted to make a motion that we approve the Consent Items.
Mayor Protem?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'm sorry, that was Agenda Item Five. Agenda Item Six is Public Comments. Um, and we have quite a few people signed up for Public Comments, so when you approach the podium, please begin with your name and your address. We'll start with Ms. Sanford. Did I see her in here? I didn't. No, that's our coming. Thomas Brock. Kelly Jo Metz. Sandra Bynum.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Sandra Bynum. I live at fourteen fourteen Burley Ave, and that's here in Spring Lake, North Carolina. Um, few things that I would like to, um, talk about, um. I'm new here to Spring Lake. Um, lot of things I don't know. Um, I just moved at this residence. I wasn't told anything about no moving, you know, at the end of the year, any of that. So, when it come to that, I was really blank. When I found out about it, it was in June, and I went to the property manager about it because I ain't know nothing about it. Um, I can't do a lot like I used to. Um, the time I doing surgery on my back, um, I fell in there and I end up with a tear in my shoulder and my knee. My friend, uh, fell in a, um, hole in there in a trailer, ended up in the hospital. He just got out of the hospital. Um, I was told the last time I was here, I wasn't able to speak. But, um, the lady told me that, um, few peoples from here was gonna come out and talk to the community about the living situation. I almost didn't came, come in. Because when you going through things like this, um, people really don't want to hear, you know, your situation and what you going through and different things of that nature. And people try to attend to make it, you know, justified and say, well, they, within their rights, they can do what they want, being turned around and say, well, that's wrong. If you robbing Peter to pay Paul, and you knew you was closing this place down, why move me in there? If I would've knew this, I wouldn't have never moved in there from the door. So, I feel like I've been taken advantage of, and I can't work on this able. Um, it was said that last week, there was a meeting here, um, about the water. Um, being so high, mine's is one of them. Mine's is a payment of a house. That's how high my water bill has been. Um, one of the ladies told me somebody was gonna come out and look at that. Nobody never showed. Um. It's wrong that, you know, the people have to live like this. Um, I was tested, um, because I have broken out, um, my throat had closed up on me. Um, findings is, um, I'm allergic to two different types of mold, which there's mold there. Uh, I'm allergic to roaches, which is roaches.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but we have a time limit.
Okay.
And we have, you know, other people we have to get to. I appreciate your comments, and we'll definitely look into them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, is that the Adore Queen? Uh, Regina Thompson.
Should be Regal.
Oh, I'm sorry. I seen the Thompson and I, I skipped. I know. Absolutely. Please state your name and address with record.
Hello to all. I am Reggie Thompson. I reside at one thousand eight Diane Circle. Been a resident on that street for about fifty-three, fifty-four years. So, I've lived in my parents' house as a teenager or a young, young person, one thousand four, and I bought one thousand eight. My concerns, I got three quick concerns here. First of all, I think you are trying to hire the town manager that you are trying to hire. I think that was, that was completely wrong. I think that if, in fact, I know if Spring Lake's trying to grow, that if you're, if we're trying to grow, we're trying to get out the hot water, we're trying to get out the news, trying to hire somebody that's constantly in the news, that's in the news before, would have been this, it's just been a bit of wrong. It's just a big mistake. Second, um, I have a problem with Spring Lake with the trash. I got a neighbor that's had truck, uh, trash and stuff in her front yard for the last two weeks, and nobody's picked it up. Dead, um, mattresses and stuff, and it's been two weeks now, and nobody's came and picked it up. And I've been calling you all and complaining about the trash, about the trash when they come and pick the trash up in our streets, the stuff they drop on the floor. My neighborhood, Woodland West, looks a mess. It looks a mess with all the droppings and everything that's, that's been dropped from, I don't know if it's, well, it's from both of them. And it shouldn't, it's never been that way. And it's never been, when we put something out to get picked up, it's, it's taking two weeks. It takes two weeks, or sometimes they come and they come the next day, or they come two days later. It's never been that way before. So, whoever's picking the trash up, whether it's Spring Lake that's picking a special pickup, it needs to be corrected as, whether it's waste management, it's just, the neighborhood just looks a mess. Third is, when somebody called to try to address these concerns, can't reach nobody. Nobody calls, nobody calls back. I even called four or five different people, and there's no calls, no, no phone calls back. I called all last week, different departments, nobody picks up. Uh, voicemails, uh, can't leave voicemails, voicemails full, voicemails set up. We elected all you all up there, and we, and we should be able to get some feedback from, from somebody in this town, whether it be Alderman, Alderman, Mayor, somebody, Town Manager, somebody, and it's just not being done. It's just not, it's just not being done. I came up here last week to try to, to, to address my concerns. They couldn't do it because I didn't get on the list time enough. But that's, that's just simple. But my, my main concern is the trash pickup that's really going on. You all really need to look at, and, and this is not the first time I complained about it. I complained about it last year, and it's just gotten worse. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, and our last, uh, public comment is from Mr. Harold Belton. He sent in a written statement, which I will read for you now. I don't have his, oh, yeah, I do have the bottom. Uh, Harold Belton, two oh six Tram Room. Um, my name is Harold Belton. I'm a third-generation Spring Lake citizen. This email is in response to your human resources infringement. When the LGC announced it was taking over the finances of the town, I was really happy and totally supportive of the action. After my being Finance Director for the City of Gathersford, Maryland for twenty-three years, and Director of Finance and Administration for the Town of Oxford, North Carolina for three years, I was of the opinion that there were financial improprieties in the town of Spring Lake. The credit card scandal caused me to believe the problem was more of a symptom of wrongdoing. During my tenure in finance, I've not ever had to deal with misappropriation theft during my watch. Once the LGC took over the town finances, I asked the town for the scope of their responsibilities. Being a prior Finance Director, I reviewed the Spring Lake's budget, audited finance, budgeted, budgets, audited financial reports for three years, and was disheartened to know that there were items in the report that caused me to question what was going on. The one million dollar loan was a failure of the mayor, the alderman, and the city attorney since they violated the LGC rules. Recently, I read your statement without narrative of reason for your office to deny the hiring of the funding of the certified qualified town manager. I would appreciate your rational, uh, decision, I would appreciate your rational rationale for that decision, the proof you might have to come for, to that decision. As a taxpaying citizen of the town, those taxes which go to pay the salaries of all town, those taxes go to pay the salaries of all town employees, what is, what is to keep your office from denying the funding of a police chief or fire chief you may have issues with? The payment of the town alderman, what is the payment of the town alderman within your purview? Mr. Treasurer, while I fully support the LGC's maintenance of the town finances, I am slash was taken aback by what appears to be your very heavy-handed ruling against the town's ability to vet and offer the position of Town Manager to the candidate of their choosing. I am of the opinion the town finances are not related to the hiring of the Town Manager. As a taxpaying citizen, I humbly ask, request, demand that you extricate yourself from the personnel, personnel decision of the duly elected mayor and aldermen. Fair is fair. When did the treasurer or the LGC insert itself in personnel matters in other communities you took financial control over? Harold Belton. So, we'll now move on to Agenda Item Seven, New Business, and I welcome, uh, Mr. David Irwin to the podium for our August Monthly Financial Report. Tiffany, you can come too. You're always welcome.
Good evening, Alderman, Alderman Women.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's good to be here. Um, so basically, I, I came, uh, we've got the August report. Don't, don't quite have some papers done yet. Been busy with some other towns. Um, and I, the comments that I put in the email, this is pretty early in the year, um, so the results are, and your revenues are, are not looking as healthy as you would expect this time of year, just based on a prior data look because of like, uh, one of the larger ones, sales tax. Um, the July and August payments for sales tax, the town didn't get them, but they're accrued. It means they're, they're posted back to last year, to June thirtieth. So, the cash is in the bank, but the revenue is showing for last year, which is a good thing. There's always a timeline. Um, but you are getting those, you are getting those property taxes this time of year, as you well know. So, the general fund typically at the end of summer is probably a low point. Um, but it's, it's still cash in the general fund is, is positive, which is a good thing. Couple of years ago, it was not. Um, so the cash flow looks pretty as expected for this time of year. Um, I have to give some, uh, kudos to Deborah Mack. She's been harping on the town of Fayetteville to get us some, some revenues that they owe us, and they finally are coming through with that. So, we're expecting about a hundred thousand dollars from Fayetteville that will also be accrued to last year, so that's a good thing. That was a, a big question mark in the budget. So, that makes it more complete. Um, we're, we're still trying to clean things up so we can get a twenty twenty-two audit, because that's really what's gonna tell us and you what the, the position of the town is at that point in time.
Are we getting closer to a timeline on that audit?
We, we don't have a timeline yet. We, we just need to get the reconciliations done. We, we are, um, Sylvia right now is working on the sheets too, which is another piece that was lagging. Um, have to report those to the treasurer's office as required. Just like last year, all the known, um, obligations are being encumbered. So, we've got lots of purchase orders in place for the year to control the budget. What, what you really want to do every year. So, the practice of last year is continuing this year. That's a, that's a good, a good thing. So, if you have any specific questions, I'll see if I can address those.
Alderman Placios?
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Uh, is the bank recon up to date through August thirty-one for this fiscal year?
You know, it, it is, and we're, you know, part of the sheets is working on the outstanding checklist, really finding out which ones are truly outstanding. There were some, there was one large check to, um, I guess it was to the uniform people that was showing as outstanding, but, um, we, we verified that it was in fact replaced. So, we were able to, to just reverse that check. But once we get the outstanding checks done, then we, then we know that the bank is truly reconciled. All the current transactions are reconciled.
Um, you've already addressed the audit, uh, with the mayor's question. Uh, you credited staff for their due diligence. Uh, but have there been any red flags during these first two months externally or internally?
Not that we've seen that.
Okay. Uh, Positive Pay is an automated service provided by our bank to help mitigate check fraud. Are we set up on this yet, or is this still handled internally?
We were doing it manually, which was very time-consuming, too time-consuming. We have the, the current staff, Sylvia, Lindsay, to be exact, is, is looking at the bank account every day. So, we're, we don't have that manual Positive Pay in place. We are working, and I think we're close to getting it automated, um, which means we'll take a check file, send it or post it to the bank, and then they'll use that to match clearing checks. That's really what you want, is an automated.
Yeah. So, we're getting close to having that automated. Thank you. Um, and, uh, has there been any discussion, further discussion about, uh, possible pay study for our town employees?
Not, not that.
I know that was a discussion we had entered in, we had started with, um, Joe and, and you all, but there's not, not been further discussion about that.
Not, not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Um, and then the hundred thousand dollars, um, that you mentioned, that Deborah Mack had kind of not found, but discovered uh, from Fayetteville, uh, do you know or have any idea where or when that originates from? How far back that goes?
It is for last year.
Okay.
For the last fiscal year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Cooper.
Thank you. Um, you mentioned the money, uh, coming from Fayetteville. Uh, is there something we should put in place to keep that from happening in future years?
Deborah Mack. We need to put her in place.
Some of it seem to be some recording issues getting finalized on, on Fayetteville side. We, they, they have to calculate what is. We, we know we're gonna get like, um, fair line tax. There's, there's, it's almost like a, a rebate thing to get from Fayetteville. We know we get it, but they, they have to calculate it. So, it's, you know, it's just incumbent on us to just be persistent.
They have to get some debt collector role. Why do you have to?
Persistent, yeah.
Give us.
And, um, my other question, uh, you said you were, there were some things that had to be put in place before we could start, um, the audit. Cause that is due, or was due, is due October thirty-first, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, that's extended to December first.
Right. So, do you think we're gonna meet that, um, December first deadline?
Uh, no.
Cause isn't that in our accountability agreement?
Not for the audit, not for the audit.
No, we, we have a deadline on it.
Okay, so, um, do you think we'll meet January first, or is it gonna be much further out?
As long as we can get started within the next month, it'll probably be more like the end of February would be my guess.
Okay. Okay. And lastly, um, I think, um, I know our, our, um, last audit was waived, but I don't remember seeing that notation on your website. I know it's on there for a couple of other places, but I don't remember seeing that for us.
Okay.
Yeah, can we get that out, baby?
I'll answer.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. I have no idea. Yeah, um, just some updates, um, just quite a few. I do want to make sure that the town is aware that we are in the middle of, um, still finalizing our decision on the manager. We are, um, waiting to get a response back from the treasurer's office to set up some time to discuss, um, how we are going to proceed further with this. Um, so, uh, as of right now, we are still moving for, with Chief Williams as our, um, acting town manager. Um, and we will update the community as we are updated. Um, so, there's that. Other updates, we do have Halloween hours. Yay, lighthearted stuff. Halloween is happy and fun and candy and stuff. So, our trick-or-treat hours for the town are Monday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, uh, from six P M. to eight P M. Um, throughout the past few weeks, I've received several complaints about graffiti, um, and cagging happening at our parks. No, this, it has been addressed, um, and it is on the plate of our manager and staff. Um, and it will be addressed appropriately. We have to prioritize things, and we have to, um, move with the things that have, take precedence. And, um, we are really working on figuring out which direction we're moving with, um, the manager. And so, please just be patient with us as we address, um, other issues happen within the town. Um, so, I don't have very many updates. Other than that, I know, uh, myself and Alderman Placios were able to attend a phenomenal training given by, uh, Cumberland County's Board of Adjustments. Um, very, very thorough training, uh, which is going to assist the town, um, and our in-house Board of Adjustments, um, with, with moving forward properly with correct protocols and procedures. Um, other than that, I don't have anything. I will pass it off to you, Mayor Protem.
Uh, with that being said, uh, I am on the Board of Adjustments. I'm official. And I am looking for some members to, um, help with that, um, committee. And so, if you're interested in serving on the Board of Adjustments, please fill out an application. Uh, we don't meet every single day, and it wouldn't take up a lot of your time, but it would be a good, great citizen, um, uh, thing to do as a citizen, and I really need some people that have, um, just a little bit of time to spare. And, um, lastly, I just want to remind everyone about, um, um, cause I am a teacher, and this is important and dear to my heart, um, please, um, look at the school board, um, and make sure you vote. I don't care who you vote for, but just make sure you do, you do the election, that'd be all.
And to piggyback right, I feel like that was one thing that I missed. We are in the middle of our midterm elections. Uh, one-stop early voting opened on the twentieth. Um, right now, our numbers as of Friday e, Saturday, excuse me, Saturday afternoon, we had about, just about three hundred, three hundred and fifty people, um, in our early voting site. I hadn't checked the numbers for Sunday and today, but I'll definitely, uh, double-check those numbers. But, um, at two forty-five Roos Street, right across, um, at our rec center, early voting is from the twentieth through the fifth of November. You can check our Facebook page, our website, or the Cumberland County Board of Elections page, um, for the exact times and locations. But early voting, one-stop locations are for all people in Cumberland County. Um, you can go to any early voting site to cast your vote, so please use our rec center. Alderman Placios?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, did want to, uh, publicly thank our, uh, acting town manager and our interim town clerk for their work and service to the town and stepping in beyond their normal duties with the town.
Can we give them a round of applause?
And I did want to reiterate, voting is open, uh, at the rec center until seven thirty tonight. I went ahead and jumped in there right before I came to this meeting. I, um, the Appearance Committee meeting, the next one is November ninth. Um, I did want to also piggyback on Mayor Protem, uh, who's needing help on the Board of Adjustments. There are variances, there are things that, you know, we need to make decisions on, but we, the board, cannot make those decisions. Our citizens have to make those decisions. So, it gives you a little bit of power in our town, um, okaying things and, uh, you know, voicing your concerns and whatnot. I think that's a very powerful board to be a part of, is the Board of Adjustments. And, uh, we are in need of that immediately, and we have a couple of other boards that are, uh, disbanding, you know, as a result of our merge with the Fayetteville Cumberland Recs Department. Um, and so, those committee members would, it would be very helpful and, um, great if we can get you on some of our other boards as a committed citizen here in town. And, uh, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, I forgot you, Mayor Protem.
I don't, the only thing I do have is there is a new restaurant that opened up in Spring Lake, right up in the shopping center. It's located at eleven sixty-one North Rag Boulevard. It's called Kita D's. And it is a soup, soul restaurant, but it is a way and pay. And, but they do have it to where you can, um, you can, uh, pay for a table to sit in there, you know, like want to have a company meeting or something like that, and they are gonna rent that space if you want to have a function there. So, again, that's Kita D's, and it's located at eleven sixty-one North Rag Boulevard here in Spring Lake.
Yeah, they're all that. Thank you. That's all I have. Alderman Lafferty?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all the citizens that came out tonight. I appreciate you all coming out here, taking time out to, to see what's going on in our town of Spring Lake. Your voices are heard. We appreciate the, the words that you say up here, so that, you know, it helps us formulate what needs to be done. We appreciate the words that you say up here so that, you know, it helps us formulate what needs to be done. So as we go forward, please make sure that your voices remain to be heard. So if you have something that you want to address with us, just like what was done tonight, if you are afraid of public speaking, type it out, send it up here so it can be read. So we appreciate that. Chief, Friday, thank you. For those of y'all don't know, Chief took me around Friday. We went to the maintenance shed over there, talked to some of the employees, went to the wastewater treatment facility. If board members have not been out there, it's a good place to go there and just see one of the necessary places in Spring Lake. That if that place goes down, that we're in a world of hurt. So Tim, thanks for your focus that I got to go talk to out there and just seeing an eye-opening of what happens here in Spring Lake. Our Military Veterans Affairs Committee will be meeting tomorrow night. We'll be meeting here at six thirty P M. So as we get ready for Veterans Day, we appreciate all of our military members, our veterans, those that have served, those that continue to serve. Halloween's coming up. We have our police department out there. Please keep our young, future generations of citizens out there safe as they go through here. And let's make sure we remind all of our adults as they're driving out there. The nights are getting dark quicker and so we take care of our future leaders, our kids, our future that we have out there. And also, great things are happening in Spring Lake. If you've noticed, there's been some demolition going on. Some of the old buildings are coming down. So Ms. Hickman, thank you very much for in your normal duties, ensuring that those get done. Not only your acting duties as clerk here, but thanks for pushing those through, making sure that these get done so that we do have some forward ability here in Spring Lake to make a change, to see change here in Spring Lake. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next cleanup will be the first Saturday of the month.
T-Mark, rest your drink, Mark. Alderman Cooper.
Thank you. So I do also wanna reiterate, we do have early voting going on in Spring Lake. And please tell your friends and kids to come vote here so we can keep our early voting site. You don't have to live in Spring Lake the whole year. Secondly, I have been working on a Haunted Lakes with several people in the community. We've partnered with two churches, the fire department and our beautiful interim clerk, Ms. Hickman is gonna be at the water fountain. Both fire departments, I heard, is it Sparky? It's gonna, might make an appearance at one of those locations. And we have about thirteen locations, about seventeen different businesses and then just organizations and citizens who are gonna help us out. So come out, tell your friends. I will be printing out about four hundred little papers with locations so that we can have them at each place so everybody can come. One of the things we wanted to do this year was make it safe for as many children as possible. Because, you know, there are some children who live in some neighborhoods whose parents aren't gonna be able to bring them out. But if we have something set up there, they can come there and go home safely. So that was one of our biggest things we wanted to do. The other thing, I've been talking to someone who's gonna be sponsoring the, well, she's gonna be heading up the Operation Turkey on Thanksgiving here in Spring Lake. So it'll be with Operation Turkey and some other organizations in Fayetteville. But we will be, yeah, we are one big family, which is Mr. Carl Pergel, who has been here. So we will be meeting people on Thanksgiving Day. Anybody who needs a meal, they can go to Operation Turkey, select the Fayetteville Spring Lake area and request however many meals they need. And I think that's it.
So I just wanna make sure we give them some props to Alderman Cooper for what she's done with Halloween this year. Last year, we literally, that's about the two. It's okay. We can always stop for that. Last year, we had six locations. It was massively successful and we heard from the parents repeatedly, especially because we were, you know, still in the remnants of COVID, you know, having a safe vetted place where the kids can come out, talk to, or have candy from one person that's been approved and sealed by, you know, vaccinated people. So we know we're giving them out safe things. But this takes a lot of logistical planning. So to go from six to thirteen is huge. And the logistics behind that is phenomenal. So thank you for doing this for our town. We hope that this is something that we can continue to build on involving, you know, our businesses, local businesses, and maybe even, you know, some community folks who want to get involved with this. But making sure that we are providing a safe and COVID-friendly environment for our children. So thank you for heading that. That's a huge job. I believe that is it. Oh. Bob Clark, do you have anything for us?
I would just like to say, after ten years, Softy Wings right here in Spring Lake, off Rag Boulevard, will be closing its doors on Friday. So if you wanna go there and get yourself something to eat before they close, that their Friday will be their last day.
I forgot to state the time and date for Haunted Lakes. It is from six P M. to eight P M. on, is that October twenty-ninth? That's October twenty-ninth, six P M. to eight P M. And you don't have to go to all stops. If you get enough candy at one place, hey, you go.
Awesome. I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session. Alderman Cooper.
So move. I make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to N C G S one four three dash three one eight dot one, one A six personnel. And N C G S one four three dash three one eight dot one one A three attorney's client brief.
Mayor Protem? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? We are now going into closed session. Thank you all for coming out.
Yeah, I just want to formally say that I thank you for stepping up to this role Chief Williams. And this motion is being made for clarity because we have a vacancy in our Town Manager. And it is not a temporary vacancy. And for that reason, we are now pointing what was an acting manager to an interim Town Manager.
Thank you for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Even though I don't have a vote mine, but I do. Any opposed? Of course not. Welcome. The motion carries to make Jason Williams our interim Town Manager pursuant to NCGS 160A-150. Alderwoman Cooper.
Yes, I would like to make that motion to change Chief Jason Williams from Acting Manager to Interim Manager contingent on LGC approval of the contract.
Alderman Lachman?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Alderman Pockets?
Yeah, I just want to formally say that I thank you for stepping up to this role Chief Williams. And this motion is being made for clarity because we have a vacancy in our Town Manager. And it is not a temporary vacancy. And for that reason, we are now pointing what was an acting manager to an interim Town Manager.
Thank you for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Even though I don't have a vote mine, but I do. Any opposed? Of course not. Welcome. The motion carries to make Jason Williams our interim Town Manager. Congratulations sir. Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion for adjournment. Alderwoman Thompson?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting for tonight.
Alderwoman Cooper?
I second.
Any discussion? Any karaoke? Anybody want to like, be like we're in the auctioneer? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries.